I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
A second?
I was not here.
Thank you. Are there any comments or corrections or anything else needed to change? All in favor? Anybody standing?
It's me.
I'm just so glad that our meetings are now recorded on video because when I lost my notes, I could go on YouTube and re-watch.
Did you have to do that?
But I watched it at one and a half, like, speed. And, yeah.
And it all came back to you.
Yeah, I spent more time searching for the file than actually just redoing it, which is a lesson I've learned way too many times and probably should actually learn it for real.
Do not have any public comment. So let us move to the meeting policy.
Does everyone get a chance to look at the revised policy? After standing by, Lynn made some additional, not to the version that's been shared, but has other additional edits.
There were a lot of little bits and pieces that I saw that are not using consistent language. And I would like to include a statement that says, "We are using the term 'meeting' to refer to all activities, functions, events, whatever, that are held in the room." Does anyone remember if the section about liability was reviewed by anybody in Town Hall? I mean, it's got a bunch of legal easy language.
I don't think so, but I think we probably cribbed that from another policy.
Well, that's what I think. Anyway.
Yeah, we compared a bunch of different policies, like, that were out there already.
Oh, I'm absolutely sure that's true.
So just as a matter of how, of the process for this, we, Susan and I and Sue Brown sat down and we kind of went through, I had made like a, kind of like a bunch of, sort of an outline or a list of things that, to me, were of concern, that, you know, issues that were raised by the recent meetings that have been in here. Again, not because of the subject matter, but because of how large the meetings were, how few sort of controls there really were on it. And so, and thinking about what it really means to have 100-plus bodies in this room. And so, I kind of quickly honed in on a few things that were important that I thought needed to be adjusted and defined. And one of those was that I think we need to make a distinction between a meeting that has, that is standing room only and a meeting that has seating involved. Because I think, you know, as, in speaking with Phil, and I asked him about that number, like, "How did we come up with that number?" And he said, "Well, based on the code, you could have 300-something in there." And I was like, "That's insane just to think about." And he said, "But, and 250 may seem like a lot, but we wanted to, we wanted you to be able to have options." You know, if we wanted to do that. I don't see that as really a positive thing personally, because I think really what we're looking to do is, is more kind of control situations and not, I just can't really see where we would want to, like, open up that can of worms and then set a precedent.
I think he meant us, like, give us the library options, right?
Yeah, I know, but again, but having, having, if we were to do that, you said, then set a precedent, then someone says, "Well, but you had 250 people in there for such-and-such event."
Yeah, but if it was a library event, then we'd say, "'Cause it's under our own control."
I know, but even so, it's still, it's still, you then have to argue with people, just like we've had to argue with people just about the sign itself.
It also just seems like if the library was going to do a program that we thought was going to draw that many people, we'd want to move it somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, just the reality of being this-
Like, 250 people in here would be unpleasant.
It would be nearly impossible.
Even if they were tiny people.
So I, so that was, that was one conversation that we had. I mean, I spoke with the building inspector, the building inspector said, "250, that must be wrong." Again, Phil said this was based on math, so, but, but the reality is that the policy had already stated a limit of 100 people, which, in thinking about it, I think that that is still a lot of people, but it's not unreasonable if you consider this room as standing room only, if you were to have an opening, for instance, and there were no furniture involved, then, sure, you could do that. For anything, though, that involves, and people come and go in a situation like that, they stay for 15, 20 minutes, and their feet get tired, and they're like, "Well, see you, we're out." But anything that is set up to be over a certain time period, you just have to assume that it's going to involve seats, because you can't, like, the folks that were in here for those two months in a row, they were doing meetings that were lasting, like, three-plus hours.
And they had the room from 11 until 2.
Yeah, so three, three hours. But, so you could, I mean, obviously chairs have to be involved, no one's going to stand for three hours, and, you know, you couldn't, you can only get about 100 chairs in here. And even then, you're, like, blocked out, so you don't really have to grab. So I went back to the plan, to the actual schematic that Phil put together, and counted the seats, and basically he had, if I remember correctly, he had, I think, eight rows of 10. It was either that or the reverse. But either way, I just said, "Well, okay, that's what was on the plan as a reasonable number of chairs." So if we start there and just say that the maximum number of, you know, for a seating meeting is, seated meeting is 80. And then you start looking at, okay, what kind of a meeting is it? Well, for this meeting, for whatever reason, I need a table or I need two tables. So at that point, start subtracting rows that you can reasonably have in the room with the furniture. And so I just created the little chart there where you see it whittled down the more furniture that you have. It's a little bit arbitrary, but it seems, you know.
And so, you'll send this out, once it's finalized, you'll send this out to people when they book them?
So for, for a meeting like that, where it's not, you know, something that's weekly or monthly, people where we are familiar with the parameters of the meeting, but if somebody cold calls us and says, you know, "We're interested in having a meeting," you say, "Okay, we're going to send you the policy in the form, this will be all one, this will be one document, and I don't have the, the application, which needs a little bit of tweaking as well." But I don't see that that really needs, I mean, maybe it needs to be approved, but it's not really a policy document, so I don't, I don't know if you do-
As long as it matches what's in here.
Yeah, so it's, but it's going to, I mean, it basically will reflect what's in the policy, that you're going to tell us contact information for one person, the expected attendance, you know, AV needs, furnishing needs, so that we can then say, "Yes, this meets the policy, we have the equipment, and what you're planning to do is realistic and reasonable for this space, and meets the policy guideline." So, and then, you know, because it's one document, they have to go through this, or at least pass it, before they can sign the paper.
What I would like to see, and especially once we move this to a website, is that in the way that if you log onto something, you have to check off the little box that says, "I have read," and, you know, every time Apple does an update, it's like, "Well, you mentioned, I read the whole frickin' policy." But the thing is, we need to make sure that they acknowledge, even if they don't do a thing by reading it, that they are responsible for being aware of that information.
But just by signing, by signing the policy, you've done that regardless. I don't know when that's going to be a-
Oh, I don't know, but I'm just saying that the goal is eventually to be able to-
Right. Another consideration for this is, and we probably talked about this at the previous meeting, but because we're on a shared campus with other departments, and council on aging is obviously another public and busy space, we need to be aware of their schedule and anything, I think, over a certain expected attendance. So I think, I can't remember what the number that I put on here was for that, and it's, like, the typeface is really tiny, is it 45? So anything over 45, so basically, like, a little over a half, a half-full attended meeting that's during COA hours, we need to notify them and just be like, "Is this okay with you?"
So this is the part that I was, oh, really unclear on. So the policy is very unclear on this. Must be approved in conjunction with the council on aging staff. So why do we even have this in here? Because who is going to do that? So I'm coming with my group of 50 crazy middle-aged moms, and we're going to have a thing with two tables. And we want to meet Monday from 9 to 12, right? So do I have the call the council in aging and get the approval?
No, it's rework, the library work, that it's pending the approval, so that we don't-
So then you don't even need to put it in here? Because as part of the process, if they fill out the application-
That's an administrative step.
It's an admin, it's an administrative step.
I guess, but I think that they should know that this is a consideration, because if you call them back and say, "Well, council on aging," I mean, sure, we could tell them, "No, you can't do it," but I mean, I think it, I think it bears-
Because this, by putting this in our thing, you're essentially giving the council on aging, on paper, the right to veto anything here.
Over a cer, I'm saying that we, okay, maybe the language needs to be changed so that it's not, that it's not a joint decision, but I do think that we need to, you know, run it by them in the same-
And that's totally fine, but I don't think it needs, I don't think it needs to be in our policy.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I mean, maybe other people disagree, I just feel like it's sending a different message than I think we want to convey.
Well, and I, I think it's also easy for me to imagine there being events at the council on aging that are outside of their regular hours that also would need the parking lot. So for instance, on Saturday, there was a winter dance from the high school there. I don't know what the hell that impacted the parking lot. But anyway, that was outside of the normal hours, senior center. There's also, like, other meetings that happen there, election day, et cetera. So like, having their hours in here, like, that also feels like it, it takes away our ability to kind of coordinate with them, or for their hours to change without our policy change, like, it's maybe too much information.
I think, I guess this is, this is what I would, would consider, then, something that needs to go into the internal, like, staff process. It's like, here's the checklist of, like, what you do, so you get a reservation, you go to check the hours, when is it? Is it, because we want to avoid, like, a head-on collision and having them, you know-
Well, is there a shared calendar between the senior center and the library, so that things can be cross-checked?
Personally, it would be easier to just pick up the phone and call them. I don't know, because I don't know, like, what's, is their calendar complete? Is it, do they know about something that we don't know, because it hasn't been announced? If someone is-
But even just an internal calendar, it didn't have to be-
Not a shared calendar, no.
And there's no internal shared calendar.
Would you also coordinate with V1? Because like, on-
No, because we don't share a parking lot with them.
Yeah, they don't have a right to this parking lot.
They, they park because they, they use the parking lot because it's a public parking lot, and they are, by whatever verbal agreement, they only do that outside of operational hours. But it's not like a formal agreement, and they don't have a right to the, to parking, so it's, you know, that's not our problem necessarily.
Because didn't they have, like, a vodka tasting last weekend? Did that impact?
If it happens on the weekend, I don't know.
That started at 2, yeah. Right, I mean, it is very complicated, because it's a shared parking lot, and we don't know who is using it for what. It's also, like, spillover for BMW, right? So we, we can't control all the parking. You're right, that if they're having an event, even though they technically don't have a right to the parking lot, no one's out there policing and telling them they can park their 24 things.
Until it's demonstrably an issue.
Well, exactly.
There's something going on at 24 over there.
Is or was?
Is.
I mean, again, as long as it's-
But that doesn't have anything to do with the meeting room.
But it could, because, I mean, to Maureen's point, is that there's a lot of, everyone's sharing the parking, so it's, it's going to be impossible. Inevitably, no matter what we say, what we say our policy is, there's going to be some point in time that someone's going to get mad because of parking. But if we put it in our policy, it kind of makes us responsible for it, and the way the policy is writ, you know, worded currently, you essentially are saying, "If the council on aging does not approve this, then you can't have the meeting room." So, anyway, I, I don't disagree that it's good policy to say, "Hey, we've got a, you know, a group here, they want to bring in 100 people."
So, but if, if, okay, but I mean, at the end of the day, if you and the 50 moms want to come in, and the council on aging says, "Absolutely not, because we're having the tuna fish luncheon that day, and we're expecting a big crowd," at that point, it's going to be down to my discretion to say, "Go ahead or not." And then at that point, it's sort of like, well, you can't win them all.
But there's also a third option, sure, we just don't, we can't guarantee there's parking. There's, just so you know, there's another event at the senior center that day, we cannot guarantee parking.
And so you're saying I should not say this isn't appropriate for the meeting?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying there's options, you're, you're making it seem like there's only one option. I'm saying there, there are options, you can communicate, you can do nothing and just let the chips fall, you can call and coordinate, and then make a decision and tell them either yes or no. And the third option is you can say, "Sure, but just to let you know, there's the tuna party at the senior center, so parking might be limited."
Well, and, and there's plenty of parking in the surrounding area. You know, like, there's parking at the church, there's parking at the Russell-
But if this event, if the, if the moms are meeting at 9:00, and the tuna party starts at 10:00, then the moms are going to take all the parking, and the tuna party will then not be able to use the parking lot. I, I actually wonder if having much more sort of general language about, you know, parking lot capacity may be taken into consideration, or something like that? Like, not promising the council on aging and their hours, or other entities that might need to use the parking lot? But just to say that parking lot capacity may be an issue that can lead to a no.
We're also assuming that everyone is using a car. I mean, how do you know that the 50 moms aren't all coming here by bus, right? I'm going here with 250 moms.
Right, but that would be a factor in the application, if you were to say, "And by the way, we're all coming by bus," then we would be, well, sure.
But who's going to put that in there? Are you going to ask in the thing, are you coming by bus or car?
Okay, but let me, let me just, let me just make sure that I understand what you're saying. You're basically saying that parking should not be a criteria for accepting or not accepting a reservation.
That would be my, my philosophy would be, yes, don't make parking a consideration. Should you coordinate? Yes. If you know you're both expecting 100 people at exactly the same time, then-
What's to coordinate? How can you coordinate if you can't say no?
Yeah, well, it has to say, who gets priority, like?
There's no decision, but you could at least say to the folks, so, okay, I'm having 100 people-
I think you're getting too much into all the what-ifs and trying to accommodate too much.
I'm not trying to accommodate anything, I'm trying to do the opposite. I'm trying to say, the chances of this blowing up in our face are pretty minimal, let's not micromanage parking. Sure, it's, I think, the coordination is simply, if Patrick wants to call the council on aging and saying, "Hey, we've got a group booking in at 9:00 a.m. for 50 people, just to let you know," like, I feel like-
But then you run into the issue of, if you don't want to hear the answer, then don't ask the question.
Well, that's true, too.
And so, if you're going to call council on aging and say, "Hey, we got this big event coming," and they say, "Well, we do, too." Well, why did my friend, no, you know, like-
Yeah, well, that's a can of worms that you probably don't want to open.
Yeah, I think just-
I guess what I'm looking at is that the, there's the reality of, I hear what you're saying, and you can just say to the people that are organizing the meeting, you know, there's only 100 spaces, or whatever it is on the site, and something, something else is going on at the same time, it might be a little tight. Problem is that, like with the people that were here, they hear what they want to hear, and it's sort of like, just, "Damn the torpedoes, we got a room, hot diggity, and we're going to have our meeting," and whatever. But the reality is that we're trying to, we are trying to run a library, and basically all of the people that come in to do ordinary library business, whatever that is, are then, you know, screaming at us that they can't even get through the lobby, or they can't, you know, get to the door.
But that's a different problem.
Okay, well, they can't get, they can't park their car, they can't get to the library.
But that's a different problem, you're, you're making it about, is there something happening in the council on aging?
I'm saying that that would, it is two different things. I mean, this was just one event, council on aging wasn't even open. But I'm saying during the normal business hours, if someone says, you know, just, just say that they're at the same time, not even like, different times, they're just like, two happened, two happened to be at the same time, and it's going to be way too much, it's a crush. I think, just in terms of cooperation between departments, I think that we would probably should have said, one, one department or the other, whether it was just by the, you know, that one was booked preceding the other, like, those should have, the second reservation should have been postponed or not, you know, not taken.
What, when did this happen?
I'm saying if it did.
Oh, well, I mean, that's, that's a choice, but, but making it about the regular library patrons can't come in, that's different. If it really, if that's disruptive, then we should say, during the library hours, no more than this many people. Like, if that's the concern, because that's got a different solution.
But you still can't manage that, you just don't know how many people are really going to show up. I think the whole parking issue just needs to get taken off, I think.
Let them find their own parking.
Yeah, whether you're here for a meeting or whether you're here for library hours. But it's not just about the people using the meeting room. Because when I was here that Saturday, when the room was oversubscribed, the patrons, one of them called the desk and said, "What's going on, I can't find a parking place." And it's not as though there were even handicapped spaces available, except a couple down next to the senior center. I saw one family come, and the dad dropped off the mom and the two children, he walked in like 15 minutes later, after he went and found a parking place, someone else. My concern from having seen that is that, to my way of thinking, our patrons take priority, and if there is something going on that prevents them from using the facility that they probably paid for, or even-
But these may be patrons, too, these are also potentially people who pay.
You still can't be policing the parking lot situation.
Yeah, I mean, they're, what if it is every, you know, the, the, all the elementary school from first to third grade are all meeting here, they're all taxpaying families, they're all patrons, they're here having their meeting, so what's to say that I can't have my parking here in my meeting, because the regular person who comes in every Saturday morning to get their books can't find, like?
So let's, can we reframe this? So the cars, yeah, as you're saying, someone in, in alternate universe might charter a bus, but that is very rarely going to happen. So I guess what I'm saying is that during normal business hours, can we just limit the number of people that can have a meeting?
Yes, you could, you could.
The entire, I mean, same, same difference, because again, if you limit it down to like, okay, you can never have more than 45 people at a meeting during normal hours, that essentially achieves the same thing. Because, you know, if everyone selfishly drives their own car, then that's a maximum of 45 cars. If they carpool, then it's less. Perhaps that solves the problem.
I mean, that would solve all of the problems that you're describing. Do I think it's the right thing to do? No, but that's my personal opinion.
What, what is not the right thing to do?
To limit it.
I mean, it's supposed to be a community space.
I'm 100% behind limiting it so that people can actually fit in. Like, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm just saying, limit it just so we can make sure we don't have a, a parking problem. I'm not in, I'm, I'm not for that, but I would rather have that than have all this checking with everyone, who gets the room first, that kind of thing.
Yeah, you can't maintain that, that is not feasible to maintain. It's not feasible to be checking in and working with the parking numbers, and who, where else are they going to park? Like, you can't-
I guess I'm afraid that if, if this is, you know, that this situation then becomes, it, it becomes not foreseeable, but possible, that the main driver of activity at the library is the free meeting room, in which you can put 100 people without restriction, Monday through Friday, you know, 35 hours a week.
Like the pizza-eating middle schoolers at the basement of Junks? Remember the pizza-throwing wild, crazy middle schoolers in the meeting room down the basement of Junks?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, there's enough people that are looking for meeting space all the time, and if there's no, if there's no room in the policy for there to be discretion to say, that's not really a really great time for like, a meeting that's potentially going to have 100 people.
I didn't say that, I just said that, why limit it in the policy? It's perfectly within your discretion to say, if you know, as the library director, that Luna also happens to be having her very popular children's group, or super craft thing, or whatever, Saturday morning at 9 o'clock, and a group calls and says, "I want 100 people," just say, "It's, it's not, you know, you can't, it's not available that people, 100 people."
But that, are you saying, like, if she were doing that, meeting endless with that activity?
No, even if it wasn't, if, if you expected 30 families to show up for the preschool room, you already knew that was happening, because you're the library director, you know this. So you know that it's not going to be a good experience for anyone if you've got 100 people here and 30 people there, potentially at a time that V1 is also having a tasting.
So it sounds like you're just saying, "Don't make any of this explicit in the policy, just say no."
That would be my opinion, just say no.
As long as there's a line about discretion of the director.
There is, because there has to be, like, it always has to be up to discretion. Or if, like, another example would be, if you know you're going to be short-staffed, then, then you have the right to say no to a giant thing, because you don't have the staff.
Right, well, I mean, arguably, I could say that we never staffed for that, so that's a different question, but I guess what I was trying to do with this is to make as much of this explicit, so that it's in the policy, so that I point to the policy, rather than simply saying, "It's at my discretion." That leads to a lot of conflict, because someone is saying, "I don't trust your judgment, you shouldn't have your job." I mean, this is what happens.
Yeah, okay, okay, so then what, so then, in your opinion, what, what limits-
But I mean, I can, I can put up with, I can put up with that if the, if the trustees support that approach, and then when the complaint comes, they say, "No, that's the way we wanted it to happen," and it's not going to just get relitigated with, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, so, I mean, if, so if we took, okay, now, now we have a new objection, is, it's a lot of extra stress for you, so great, so what, what potentially-
It's not, it's not stress, it's just, it's simply, that's what's going to happen. So it's just a matter of, you either are explicit, or you, you know, someone says, "Well, where is that written, where is that written?" And it just becomes like a conflict, it's, I mean, it's no more stressful than someone complaining about the written policy. Well, it's at your discretion, but again, the questioning, "Why?" You know, like, "Why is it not 250?" You know?
So I'm wondering if, if a statement about, about the director's discretion, and it could say something like, "For reasons of parking capacity, staffing levels, library programming, or other, you know, or other concerns," or something, like, giving some sense of what some of those things might be, of what we anticipate, common reasons that you would say no might be, so you do have something to point to. Because I agree that being able to say, like, "Listen, it's a parking crunch, they've got a huge thing going on over there, we just can't do it at that time, this is something that we consider, and it was in our policy."
Yeah.
But you don't have to get into super specifics about, like, this is the exact threshold, and the exact hours, and so on. So if you get, so if there, like, if there's maybe like, a couple categories that you think are likely reasons you'd say no, put those down, and then make sure there's a, like, "or other reasons."
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
For example, but not limited to.
Right, we can take that approach, that's, that's fine.
Oh, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Is there anything else about this that really-
I feel like that gives you more leeway to say no.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. I, I mean, I understood where Patrick was coming from to begin with, but I think this is a much better solution.
So I think it's helpful to have some transparency of, like, why someone might say no, but you don't have to lock yourself in, neither.
And make it so narrow.
Yeah, or legalistic, like, "Well, we don't, we only expect to have 44 people, so you can't, you know."
Yeah, right, exactly.
Like, how many showed up on Saturday for the preschool? Do you know? Friends around the preschool?
I don't know how many people were here. I doubt it was a huge number, but it was, you know, it wasn't like the, I don't think it was like, any kind of like an overflow problem.
But that was probably a major.
As far as, I mean, I didn't hear of any disruption related to it, so, it was, it's fine. I mean, I don't want to shut it, I want people to use the meeting, don't get me wrong, I want people to use the meeting, but I don't-
Well, I mean, it's one of a few.
It's what?
This, this room is one of just a few that are available.
Yeah, and it should be, I mean, I've had to, you know, I had this conversation to, to a degree with other folks in Town Hall, and the town administrator, who, you know, I, I described what we're kind of, the- and the town administrator, who, you know, I, I described what were kind of the added work of this room, and, and sort of like, the fact that we're reviewing the policy to make it more manageable. And she kind of thinks that should be, we should do even less, that we shouldn't be running like a, you know, an event facility, or, or, you know, whatever, as she describes it. Which, I, I mean, I sort of disagree, I, I want it to be as open as possible, but I also know that there's a reality of operating a library with only, I mean, on a Saturday, there's two people here.
Yeah, exactly.
Neither of whom is me.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm relying on them to have to manage a situation that can seem stressful and, and be potentially unmanageable. I mean, I've had to, I had to tell them, like, man, if it gets crazy, just call 911. I don't like going away and saying to the staff, "Worst case, call 911, that sucks."
I mean, but that alone is reason enough to say, we can't, we can't manage a crowd of a hundred on Saturday mornings.
There you go. But it, yeah, but again, it's just me saying, "Man, Saturday's not good for us," you know?
I think that's totally fine.
Yeah, so that's under the discretion of the library director to say, "We're not gonna do programming of that magnitude."
It conflicts with library programming.
Yeah, it conflicts with staffing issues, it conflicts with, it's up to your discretion.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, even if it were the case that who happened to be working the desk on Saturday, I know it's usually the same people, but if you had more confidence in certain people as opposed to other staff members, that might even give you some leeway to go one way or another in making a decision.
That we had to have subs, you know, and-
I have, I mean, I have much, I have full confidence in all the staff, I just think, again, I think it's unfair to the staff, is what it comes down to. Because, I mean, again, it's, it's a challenge, I mean, we need to maintain a work, you know, working conditions where people want to come to work. And if it becomes like stressful, and they're like, "I'm getting paid fifteen dollars an hour," I'm going, this is more stress than it's worth. Right, there are many factors for people to say that, um, and we don't, town doesn't really do a fantastic job of like rewarding people for their hard work anyway. So it's kind of like, it's going to be a fairly predictable result, that people are just gonna say, "This sucks, I'm leaving."
Yeah.
You know, um, so, yeah, I wanna avoid that, and so, yeah, I mean, we'll just, we'll have to look at it on a case-by-case basis and say, you know, but I, yeah, I mean, a lot of these conversations are gonna be down to, I mean, the, the last time uh, that, that, the big group that met here met, they called on the phone beforehand and, and, you know, explained the situation, I said, you know, "You actually helpfully caused us to review the policy because, you know, this is, it's too much for us." Um, and, you know, the guy was like-
Did they get it?
Huh?
Did they get it?
Well, it, it's not that they get it or don't get it, it's just, again, they're, they're trying to, they're, you know, they're trying to just get more and more and more, they're trying to, you know, get as much as they can.
Well, what would they ask you for the second time?
Well, he, when I said, "Well, nothing," I said, "A hundred is a hundred, that's what's in the policy now, and that's what we're sticking."
Yeah.
Um, and he said, "Well, but if we had more than a hundred, could we, uh, have like an overflow room? Could we put them in the conference room and have them like zoom in?" And I was like, "No." So this was like an, an instance where like I used discretion to say like, "No, you can't do that," you know, because you're already sort of taking over the building.
But it sounds like they're also, they're setting the base on where they can jump off to. So, if they have like, if they invited a hundred, well, you know, maybe they'll be kind of loosey-goosey on the-
Right, who's counting, you know, and it, and it's like, it's like negotiating, certain people, many people are very reasonable and are rule-oriented, there are other people that are sort of like negotiating with a toddler. And, you know, it's just like they're gonna like, "But what about, but what about," and, and it's just-
More like a negotiation with a teenager.
Either way, not thinking reasonably.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, I, I think that's totally fine to limit. The other thing to consider is, if you know there's gonna be a big meeting, uh, you know, someday, and you don't feel right saying no, like, seeing if there's any volunteers who will come, not to do sort of library jobs, but just sort of an extra, an extra adult on hand in case something is needed.
Well, that, I mean, and that's why, um, in this case, you know, I relied on Lynn to come in, um, to, to just take a look around, because it was unusual. I mean, again, I think a volunteer, maybe, I, I feel like the trustees, because they have, you know, skin in the game and authority to-
Well, we would be volunteers too, like, I mean-
Well, in that instance, you would be, but you would also be like, "I'm a library trustee," so if like you had to speak to something relative to a policy or whatever, you'd be like, you know, in, in a position to do so as opposed to like a volunteer, you know?
I mean, I would, if you had just any volunteer here, you would say, "This is why you're here, you're here because there, there's a large group in here, and the two folks up there might not have time."
Yeah.
So we're, you know, we're counting on you to, you know, to make sure that everything is, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, that's not the job for every volunteer, but they would know what they're getting into, right? Just like, some people won't sign up to, you know, move giant trees outside, but others will, it's just, every, there's different volunteers for every job. Some people, I can think, would actually love the opportunity to tell people, "Get back in your room. You parked in a handicap spot without a placard." Right? I mean, they would think this is like the plum volunteer opportunity.
The February meeting was actually very, very different than the January one.
Yeah, in the event, for whatever reason, I think the weather, it was that super cold weekend.
But I don't, I think it was a different kind of meeting, I don't think it was, there was something about it that didn't have the same-
Draw.
Far away draw. And I had counted the chairs that were available, and we had made sure that no additional chairs were accessible. And so it was only a matter of taking a quick look and being able to see that there were empty chairs, to know that things were fine. So it wasn't even an intrusive, uh, you know, they didn't even know that I was checking on them. And there was a lot of parking, more than half of the senior center parking area was available, which was also another big clue that-
It was clear, it was clear from the phone conversation that I had before the meeting, that it was their goal to max out the meeting. Because again, that's why they were talking about, you know, it could be having overflow. Um, and, so I think if they had their draws, I mean, if you're organizing a meeting, you want people to come, so they, I think they were hoping that it would be another big-
Blowout.
Yeah, so, um, for whatever reason, that didn't happen, whether the speaker wasn't as interesting, wasn't as well publicized. But it could have been, it could have just as easily been another, you know, and, and now, just going forward, if, that, you know, we get a call from those folks, I mean, I, I, these, these are my, this is my frame of reference, that it could be, it could be like that, it could be a little less, it could be more. So, yeah, I have to take that into account.
Well, initially, the January one, they did ask people to make a reservation, or to sign up.
Yeah.
And what they didn't do was say, "I'm sorry, it's full, you may not attend." Or they didn't turn anyone away from the door, and that was a problem for which we were not really prepared. Especially when she said she would send people away and then didn't.
And after that meeting, that's when you raised the issue of, like, the condition of the room as well, right? And so did anything ever happen with that, like, did they get charged, and the policy says they'll get charged?
I don't remember there actually being a condition issue.
The restrooms were-
Well, the restroom, right, but that, that would, you know, there's no way of measuring-
Who did that?
Who, right, I mean, on a good day, the restrooms are like, we'd be charging, we'd be collecting some revenue.
Start with the teens.
It's long ago, far away.
Well, in that regard, the only other piece of this entire policy, I think that I had talked with you about too, was custodial care of the room, and how does that get absorbed, um, who's, who is absorbing that cost, is that-
And that's what I meant by the condition of the room, like, if you have to hire someone to, to clean it.
Well, and I'm worried about the condition of, like, the carpet and food and liquid.
The quilts on the wall, I mean, I'm just looking at these quilts on the wall and thinking, there's an event in here and someone spills their drink, oh, you know, on one of the quilts.
Or just fingering them, or-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a public space, it's, just, it kind of goes with the territory, if it's, if it's too precious to be in a public space, it's, it probably shouldn't be in a public space. But I, I do wanna speak to the custodial part, because I did have a couple of conversations, one, uh, is we had, we had been talking about, well, if we decided to go that route, because we only, you know, based on the way things are now, we have three custodial visits a week.
I hope one's on Monday. I hope one's on Monday.
Well, no, one is not on Monday, so that's, so that's why, this is why it was in my mind, because, you know, the meeting was Saturday, we opened on Monday, and then we didn't get a custodial cleaning until Tuesday morning.
I'm glad you guys have it on the bottom.
Yeah, tell me about it, so we, um, so I spoke with, I spoke with the, the contractor that currently does the janitorial line, I just said, you know, we're not, I don't know that we're gonna do this, but if we were going to do this, if we wanted to charge a fee for a large, large meeting where it's, you know, could be messy, and we wanted to pay for just an extra cleaning, what would you charge, you know, ballpark? And she said, "Thirty dollars," and I was like, "Okay, good information." That's basically all I need to know, I'll let you know if this is something we wanna talk about further. Um, and then in the meantime, I talked to, um, Carolyn, the town administrator, and, because we had had a conversation, Haley and I had both written to her and said like, "Look, we're having so many people through here, and three custodial visits a week for either of us is not enough." And she said, "I completely agree," because, you know, this, the town hall comes over here, and they come for meetings, and sometimes they go into the restrooms and they go, "Ugh."
Yeah.
So, um, that's a bit too far, but she was like, "I totally agree, we're gonna look at this." And so the last time I spoke with, with her about the budget, I just, you know, brought that up again, and she said, "Well, we're actually looking at the possibility of hiring someone on staff that would work for DPW, not a contractor, but somebody that would be a town employee, that would cover these two buildings and perhaps some others, but it, they would be pretty much focused on, on these two buildings." So I was like, "That's great, because if that's the case, then we don't really need to go down that road of like scheduling, you know, just a la carte cleaning visits." So, if that goes through, that would be, that would save, um, that would, that would save us. Is there anything else about custodial?
No, I've just been thinking about the logistics, like, who's gonna put out the trash can, and who's gonna collect the trash bags?
It's, it's supposed to be, I, I think we need to make it a little more explicit in here, and I did, I did kind of throw a line in here about a trash can will be provided, but I wanna make that more clear, that it's the responsibility of the person using the room to take the trash bag with them, like, whether they take it home, or whether they walk around the outside of the building and put it in the trash can, or rather, they took it home. But, you know, because our trash can will fill up, I mean, we, we get one trash removal a week, and that is always full too. So that's like another thing that, that we need to address, because by the time we get to the middle of the week, it's just like, "Throw it on top." No, uh, like the time that I had the dead owl that flew into the window, and I had to put that in the trash bag and throw that on top. It was below freezing, so it was-
What kind of owl was it?
A dead one.
Was it little?
Stone dead, no, it was big, it was a big, heavy owl.
Oh, I wonder what happened to it?
If it flew into the window.
Oh, you saw, so you saw it happen?
No, but it was, it was obvious, because it was just like on the gravel, right below the window, and it was stone dead, so, you know, somebody came in one day and said, "There's a, there's a dead, you know, there's a dead owl over there," and I was like, "Uh-huh, okay, right." I think I called animal, that's the first thing I did, I called the animal control and I said, "Uh, there's a dead owl here," I didn't wanna look at it.
Yeah.
Audrey was fascinated, she went on, she was putting pictures on it, showing the pictures.
Was that that really cold weekend?
No, this was back in the fall, but it was still cold enough that it wasn't like a concern, um, but, but, you know, days were passing, and the animal control people didn't call, I think I even called the police and said, oh, no, because I think the animal control person is also a police officer or something like that. Um, and eventually I just had, I had to call Gary, and I said, "Gary, I got a dead owl. It's on top of the trash can, I need you to take it away, because like, you know, the trash is not gonna be picked up for four days or something, so please take it down."
Well, next time you find a dead owl, you can call me, because I'll come get the dead owl, and I'll look at it, and then I'll bring it home and just like throw it out back for the wildlife, like, so it'll just go back to it.
I wish I'd known.
You could also throw it in my backyard, but I don't need to see it first, just put it in the back.
I'm not throwing it anywhere, I'm gonna, you guys can come pick it up, I'm not doing that.
What is our, what is our dead bird policy?
Can I ask you a question, um, and I think, yeah, I guess I'm wondering if, if the language at the end around like no illegal activities are permitted, I'm just wondering, like, what if a hate group wants to use the space? To me, that would be covered by, like, laws about violence, um, if they're promoting, if it's a group that's promoting violence, um, or hate crimes, like, then that would be, that would be covered under the like, you can't use this space to do things that are illegal, but-
Who registered, I mean, that's the question though, in, in the state of Massachusetts, who-
You're getting too slippery.
Who registers that one group is a, is a hate group versus-
I'm just wondering, like, yeah, I-
Yeah, but who makes that judgment, like?
Right.
And how do you know, like, let's say that I'm gonna bring my neo-Nazi group here, but I don't register neo-Nazis of Hadley. Right, Nazi moms of Hadley, I, I, you know, I register my name, my contact name.
Right, right, again, that's one of those things where, you know, even one of, even the group that was here, you know, the staff were kind of like curious to know what was going on, so they were kind of tuning in, because it was broadcast, and, um, they were kind of watching it, and, and they were, you know, kind of like, "Oh my God, this is a hate group." And I was like, I-
I think, I think vaccine misinformation, I don't, I mean, I, I'm just, you know, like, it, just in a, in a time when we see like the rise of like more and more sort of neo-fascist Nazi groups, I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, what happens if such a group says, like, we, well, it's our First Amendment right to use this space? Is that-
I would, I would not, I personally would not dispute that, I mean, I, I, again, as long as, as long as they're not actually breaking a law, um, I don't really see that it's our, our business to, to get in the middle of it.
Well, it's a slippery slope.
And I would say, if you knew there was going to be backlash, and like riots were going to occur outside in protest, then I would say Patrick is within his rights to say no, because it will probably disturb library-
Well, that's why, that's why I was concerned about the meeting that took place, because, and that's why I notified the police, because, not because I was afraid that the people in the room were going to say something, or whatever, but I was worried about disorders related to a controversial issue, where people could then, you know, the second one was in the newspaper, I mean, the second one had like a write-up in the paper, um, where people could then reasonably be expected to come and counter, you know, counter protest the meeting, and then you have people yelling at each other, or whatever, I mean, that's a totally imaginable thing.
Right, and it goes both ways, right?
But do you, do you just say, like, we, you, you're not allowed to have controversial opinions, or meetings that might incite, uh, uh, people to come with an opposite view, I mean, the, people could have come in with the opposite view and, and disrupted the meeting, at which point we would have probably had to step in, if it was like becoming disorderly, and, and again, violating the policy of, you know, patron conduct, people were yelling, people were disrupting, we would call the police on that basis, not based on what they were saying or their views.
Exactly, yeah, and I think that's what you could say, the policy is that, um, if the situation arises to a level that a staff member feels that the police need to become involved, then that group shall be charged, whatever the police fee is for, um, a police-
Well, isn't that covered by rest, the library policy?
Yeah, no, but there's, I mean, there's no, there's no, there wouldn't be a fee, there would be either charged or not charged, if the police came and just said, you know, beat it, or, or arresting you, that would be between them and the police, not between us, I mean, if someone, something was damaged, I think, I guess that would be part of the charge for, you know, for why they were being arrested. But I did wanna say that in here somewhere, we do allude to, and I wish this print was not so tiny, to the ALA's Bill of Rights, which, it's in the second paragraph?
Yep, yep, and I did confirm that as a quotation.
Okay, yeah, so, "Which states that the facility should be made available on an equitable basis regardless of the beliefs or affiliations of individuals or groups requesting its use." So again, I think we should be completely agnostic about, I mean, to be quite blunt, I don't wanna know, you know, I don't really want to know what people are talking about. I mean, for, for whatever reason, whether it's politics or things that I don't agree with, just, you know-
Yeah, I, I agree.
No, I, we can't, we can't, only if the behavior-
Right, is disruptive.
Is a problem, either what they are doing in here is a problem, or what takes place nearby.
But this was, this was a comment also made by the staff, like, "Can't we do something about this?"
About the things they were saying, or the fact- About the things they were saying, or the fact that they were being disruptive?
The, the two things are being, the two things are being conflated, that it's, this is a bad thing that's happening here. Um, and...
But I, I guess I'm trying to distinguish between controversial opinions or opinions that I find reprehensible and groups that are advocating violence, or are organizing for violence, or organizing, I mean, I, I feel like I'm answering my own question in that illegal activities are not allowed, and so coming in here in order to organize a violent rally or whatever
Insurrection.
um, would be covered by that. Um, I just don't know, like, because you can't be agnostic about, about that.
But that would be a police matter.
Right, yes.
If you'd be calling the police, like, I heard they're planning a riot in, you know, burn downtown hall. I mean, you'd be calling the police to support that.
That's all I wanted to confirm, is that, like, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I have a question to that.
I'm just, like, before I came to this meeting, I was, you know, reading something about Charlottesville in 2017, and I was just, like, it's just on my mind, and
Yeah.
and it's, yeah.
Book banning rallies.
Sure.
It is a crazy world we are living in, and these are, you know, some of...
Yeah.
These folks walk among us.
But by not limiting, like by minimizing our limitations, we're sort of, in some ways, fighting against all of that, by saying, you come and use it, even if we disagree personally with you. This, this is a public space.
Right, we're not, I mean, that's what, you know, the, the, at one of our department meetings, the, you know, the police did a training on these First Amendment podders that are going around, and because they have a right to be there, will walk into a police department or a town hall and just start filming. And very clearly, the whole point of this is to be a provocateur and to,
Absolutely.
to, to create, um, a scene that then becomes, oh, look at these people, you know, oh, they must have something to hide. So, yeah, I mean, I, I would rather not engage on that level with, um, with anyone that comes in here looking for that kind of trouble.
Are there any other elements of this that anyone would like to discuss?
There were a couple of, like, typographical things that I saw that I can...
Yeah, I mean, if you see anything like that, I mean, Lynn had some as well. I, I guess my question is really more a matter of, um, is this considered a first reading? Is this...
Is this a second one?
Do we need, should I take this away and revise it, include those changes so that everyone can then review it again, and we vote on it at the next meeting? And with a revision, do we need two readings, or is it just, do we just need one to revise something?
I think for our policies, and most of them have been revisions, we've always had two readings.
Okay.
So, I, I don't...
Sure, this is the first one.
So this is the first reading?
We will be back. Um, and we'll probably distribute our revised version in relatively short order, rather than like just before the meeting, and would kindly ask you to do a very close reading of it, um, in addition to the fact that I think I am moving out of my house on March 6th for five weeks.
Oh. Are you doing, like, a fun renovation? Okay, that's good.
You're going someplace warm?
Greenfield. Greenfield, East Hampton and Montague.
All right.
Somewhere between.
The big tour.
Yeah. What are you doing?
Essentially destroying the bathroom and rebuilding it.
Hmm.
Oh.
It has been a long process to get around.
You're lucky that you're able to do it now.
I have been trying for three years.
Wow.
Anyway, so, so the access to this, even though I can always get in my house, but I can't stay there because I only have one bathroom, so it's gonna be a little bit different. So I will get this to you, and it will look different, but this, it's not that the substance is going to change.
Yeah, I mean, I think we both have some, some work to do. Can we pass this back and forth a couple of times before we send it out?
Yes, no, yeah, no. Like, it is absolutely my intention to
Okay.
work with you in
Great.
before sending it out to everyone else, but...
Okay.
No, 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 I am not.
Yeah, you, I mean, you put a lot of, you put a lot of thought into the language on that, so I'd like to just see how that reads, and then...
Absolutely. Oh, no, 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 I...
Add the other salient points that we've talked about today.
Thought I said that earlier today, but who knows, maybe other things.
Too much going on.
Went, by the way. Okay. Would you like to report, sir?
So, I, I mean, most of this is self-explanatory. Um, we submitted a 10-year capital plan. There wasn't a lot of note on there, and a lot of it was just guesswork, because everything's new in the building. So it'd be, it's really hard to say how quickly things will wear and when we might actually ask for things. But, um, rather than have it be a surprise, and, you know, I just put things in and made my best guess.
Patrick?
And we do that every year, so...
It just occurred to me that I wonder if we should put a concrete replacement placeholder on here?
On the capital plan? It's already been submitted at this point. I, I think it can, you know, as, it seemed like everyone was in agreement that this doesn't need to happen this year, so when it comes up again, we'll just, we'll add it to, to next year.
That's fine. That's fine, but it, we know that that's something that's gonna probably have to happen. We just don't know exactly when.
Yeah. Does everybody know about the concrete? Have we talked about that last, last time? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's nothing really new about that. Um, the town annual report is due on March 3rd, and Lynn, I don't know, we haven't talked about this yet, but that, customarily, there's, there's a, a piece that I write from the staff side and the chair.
Send me last year's.
Okay, yeah.
Please, and thank you.
Um, draft budget was sent. We had the meeting, as I mentioned, with Linda and Carolyn. That went fine. Um, I, I don't know how they responded. I don't know if, if Carolyn's going to, you know, accept the budget as submitted, or if she's gonna make, you know, adjustments to it.
Did they give any feedback? Or they just were like, thank you. Patrick, next?
I mean, they didn't say, well, what do you think about this? It wasn't like a negotiation. It was just, like, they understood, you know, my points.
Right.
Um, but I'll, I mean, I'll know when something is sent back, like, here's what town administrator recommends.
Yeah.
Um, until then. But we do, um, I need to follow up on that, because I thought I would have had it by now. Um, because we're, we are meeting with the finance committee on Thursday. So it'd be good to know what the town administrator recommends.
If anybody else wants to be there, let us know.
This is, um, a situation where we are asking for more in terms of a percent raise
Yeah.
to the budget than we normally do.
That's right. That's why I wondered if they'd sent anything.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I feel like the numbers speak for themselves, and I don't really know what I can say beyond pointing out, like, the discrepancy of, you know, same staff, more or less, but, you know, 30% more of this, 30% more of that, whole new categories of work that we have to do. Um, it, it, it kind of speaks for itself. So hopefully people will be receptive to that on the finance committee. Um, because this, as, as I've said, this is really the least of what we need to keep going, because we're just getting, I personally feel like I'm just getting further and further behind, just showing up to work, um, day over day, because it's just so, so much going on all the time. Uh, youth services coordinator position has been posted, closes, uh, closes the 24th. We have one application so far, uh, but it's only been out there for about a week. Um, ethics training is, uh, is now, is live. There's a new process for that. I haven't done it yet myself, but if you haven't done it in the last two years, um, you are obligated to go through, um, the training for that. Uh, HVAC noise, I don't have anything on that, although I, I did talk to Tom Bakula, he's our administrator, um, and I, I suggested that he should check in with the town administrator about that, if he's still, because he, he always, you know, brings it to me, and I, I hear it late at night. So it's kind of always, always the same thing. And I just said, well, you know, kind of pushed it onto DPW's plate, because they're the people interacting with the contractor who installed it, but is now maintaining it. Um, and every time I call Gary, he just says the same thing, that, that, you know, that they're not calling it back, they're not doing this, they're not doing that well.
Yeah.
So I explained that to Tom, and I said, you know, if you really are feeling strongly about this, I would call the town administrator and let her know, and maybe she can lean on, um, on someone to get a result so that we can then make an informed decision.
I think that's a great answer, because, I mean, that's really what it is. They're the ones who are maintaining the system now, so they're the ones who would have the influence. I thought that was brilliant. Because it's right, it's like the most expedient way.
Well, it's the reality too. So, I mean, it's just, that is the reality. I cannot make anyone, uh, in another department do anything. I can't make them call anymore, and they're already calling.
Yeah.
And I've been asking, you know, for a while now. And, oh, and we didn't really talk about this, uh, the, we had a little meeting, um, just Allison and Lynn and myself to talk about what's going on with the roof and how to proceed. Uh, and we agreed at that meeting that it would be a good idea to have some independent, um...
Evaluations.
evaluations of the roof. So we got some recommendations, I called some, some didn't call me back, some were not, you know, in that particular line of work. But we did get two roofers, two professional roofers from the area to come out and do, um, an evaluation, go up on the roof, fly a drone, do whatever. So I only have, a- as of this meeting, I only got one of the actual written reports back. And I wanted to, before sharing them, and I wanted them to both be here so that everyone could read them. And I don't know if they're gonna match up, or if they're gonna be, um, if there're gonna be discrepancies, but I figured we should just wait until they're both here, and then talk about what we see, and what we think we should do next.
And do we need to authorize the cost of that through the construction monies? Or that's just, it's under the amount that we...
So I think one, so one, one of the inspections was 500, the other was 750, and I believe that that is under, both of those are under the threshold of what trustees had authorized me to go ahead with, um, for construction expenses. So the first, um, invoice already arrived, and I've just put that in the bills to be paid. And I'm waiting for the other one.
Um, did we find out anything about the lead? And whether there's any kind of extension, where they're...
What I do know is that there is a clock that is ticking based on the fact that the state is going into another grant round, like they're announcing a new grant round. It'll be like, whatever it is, five, six years of, you know, several projects each, each year. And at some point, that money goes away, or it gets rolled back into future projects if we haven't, you know, claimed it. So it's not a perpetually available, um, possibility for us. But I didn't get a clear answer on, on when it goes away. It may just be based on the financial reality, um, at any given time.
They announce in July, right?
Which, which thing?
The, like, the next, uh, five things that...
I'm not sure what the timing is, but, but, yeah. Um, so, yeah, I, I should check back in about that and see if there's any additional detail. But I did explain our situation. I did explain that we're kind of caught in this snow because of the roof. Um, and they're, of course, horrified and sympathetic, but, you know, what can you do? It's not, I mean, they're, they're not the lead certified, you know, they don't make the judgment. Uh, and so there are a couple of other details related to lead that have to be addressed, but this is the, obviously, the biggest one.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not to say that we couldn't get lead if we didn't have the solar panels, but I think it would be, we'd be close to the edge, you know, that we really would be down to.
Yeah, that was...
But whether we collect light bulbs or not to, to get us over the line.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's more or less, uh, it's more or less...
I'm next.
Patrick, could you say something about the library of things, which I'm very excited to hear about?
Yeah, this has got the most verbiage here, but it's actually, um, at this point, it's very embryonic, because we, uh, Audra's, before she left her position, applied for a, um, a cultural council grant. And we got $300, which is not a lot to work with, um, but it, it kind of, I think, is going to set us in motion in terms of thinking about this project. But the, really, the limiting factor for us, I mean, this would be great, because we could accept donations of, of many different things. We could tell, you know, people what kinds of categories of things we'd like to collect. The issue is we don't have the space.
Right. I was wondering where it was going to go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering. So I don't know, I'm not exactly sure how that's gonna, I don't know how that's gonna play out, uh, because we really are short on space as it is, and there's just not a, um...
Yeah, and this would need a fair amount of, like...
Right, so I think it makes...
Awkward space, yeah.
It's gonna make us think about, like, the parameters for what kinds of things we're gonna do. Like, they're just, we're not gonna be loaning out kayaks and giant things. We're gonna be, um, like the slide projector, I don't know if you guys remember. I have not had time to sit down and actually just learn how this thing works. I don't think it's that complicated, but the, the little slide and film scanner that we got.
Oh, yeah.
It's in my office. But that would be a perfect thing for a library of things, where you can just take it home and with some instructions and, and use it, and it doesn't take a lot of room. Um, so I think gadgets like that, smaller gadgets for, um, would be good. Um, but there's, they're whole, you know, they're whole categories. So we, I, we need to just spend some time thinking about it, because there could be things that, you know, sort of ingenious ways to do this, because do gardening tools really need to be in the library? Maybe there's a way of having like some sort of a shed.
A shed, yeah.
Um, although I know the planning board doesn't have sheds.
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe...
There's an article on the front page of the Gazette today about Lily Forbes and Amherst having gotten some grant from someplace for the induction, single burner
Yeah.
whatever, which is in their library of things.
Yep.
Which I thought was...
Did you see Turner's Falls as a, a traveling Smithsonian?
Yeah, we applied for that, but we didn't get it.
Just do that?
But, you know, yeah, Turner's is a deserving community, I think they'll do, do great with it. Uh, but we, we did have a group of people that did that. There was, Alan, Alan wrote that, we had folks from the history, which was, I don't remember who was on that.
Was it the Porter Phelps, maybe?
Maybe. It was, yeah, it was a real nice group effort. There were a bunch of, um, different parties involved, but, but personally, we didn't know. So that would have been in this room. I guess that was the plan, that it would have been in here.
I thought you were gonna say when you said Turner's Falls Library, I was there at some point when they had like a big display of their seed library, which I saw and was like, that would be perfect for Hadley. And also seeds don't take up a lot of space.
Yeah.
So that could be a starting place.
Yeah, that'd be a good one.
Friends, uh, I sent you all notes. Um, there's a meeting tomorrow night, and, um, they have, uh, two new volunteers.
Is it tomorrow night? I thought they moved it to, did we, did we don't change it back to Tuesdays?
Maybe I missed a memo. I'll have to look.
It's not tomorrow night.
I thought it was tomorrow night.
Okay, maybe it is. I thought we switched it. Okay.
But, uh, two new volunteers, uh, uh, let's see. Suzanne Heron, her name's not Haron, Heron.
I saw that, I was like, that's too bad for them.
Uh, she comes from, uh, either Lee or, is it Lee or Lennox? Sandersfield, maybe? And she goes to...
I know the, she's a library patron, and I know her, but I want to say she comes from somewhere like Shelburne Falls or something. Like, that's what her library, I feel like that's what her, that's...
Oh, right?
She's, but I don't, I don't know, to be honest.
But she comes in volunteers while she's doing things in the area. And Wanda Cook also is helping with the room, the, and you saw the things that the, that the friends donate to, yeah. Do you too?
I just have three quick things. Patrick, did we ever get the documents we asked for from the Western Mass Community Foundation?
Oh, when they came to visit?
Yes.
Alan was so insistent.
I remember that we got the, the document, we got a document that was signed, that was one of the things that he was concerned with, we did get that.
Okay, all right, I just, I was organizing all of my old library stuff and I saw that and was reminded and I didn't remember.
Did I send this?
You just put the statements, yeah.
I sent the statements, yeah, okay.
Right, yes, but there had been, Alan had, we had that sort of memo of understanding that may not even have had a date on it and certainly did not have a signature on it.
I think that was addressed.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to check. Two other things real quick, we have a...
Tell the Vanna.
Well, it doesn't say exactly the same stuff that, that is on the wall. But that will get sent to the paper and...
So that's the press release?
Yes, the press release. And it speaks to a little bit more than the recognition thing does in terms of personal attributes. And I shared it with the folks from whom I got the quilts and they were both very happy, so that was a good thing. One last thing I would like to mention is Patrick's contract is up in June and given that we are all familiar with it, having gone through the director review process and recognizing that a lot of things has changed since his job description was written, I asked him a while ago if he would take a stab at updating it and have that ready by April 1st or thereabouts. And once we have gone through that process, I think I would like to suggest that we sort of codify for ourselves or at least develop a process for conducting the review so it is, it takes place soon after the end of the year that's being evaluated. But that's just a general plan, I don't have anything specific in mind and if anyone would like to suggest something, I would be delighted to hear what they had to say. Does anybody else have anything else?
Has anyone pulled papers, yeah? Did that, you know? No?
I haven't heard anything. But if you know anybody who might be interested...
You know what the deadline is?
I'm sorry?
The deadline? March? I don't remember, I know it was in the town last, like the, you know, when they sent it around.
I don't recall exactly what the deadline is.
We do hopefully have a, a list of all of the positions that are open all throughout the town on the circulation desk because they asked us to put it out for people to see, a couple of people have asked questions about it.
You highlight the library trustee?
I didn't, it's kind of like confusing because it just, it says essentially who's in the position now, but it doesn't say, like, well, Alan's not in the position, so it doesn't say that that one's vacant, so it's actually confusing for people because they think that they either interpret it as that those people are running or, because they see a name next to it, they don't just say, see that it's like up for election, so it seems to raise more questions than answers, but...
It doesn't just say vacancies, yeah, just right on it.
It just...
Yeah.
A motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Second, all in favor?
Yes. Happy Valentine's Day.